I will call this meeting of the October 14th town board meeting to the order at 7:05. Please stand as the pledge leaders. The pledge leaders is to the flag of the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, agenda, or all members present, including councilman Mr. Quavis, so opens privileges of the floor. Again, to read the rules, privileges of the floor, every regularly scheduled town board meeting in the public has a right to address the town board, throwing a portion of the meeting to be referred to as privileges of the floor, which shall take place after report to the town, departments, and supervisors. Members of the public wishing to speak during privileges of the floor may sign a sheet before the commencement of the town board, indicating his or her name, address, and proposed topic. Signed sheet will dictate the order in which persons are recognized to speak and will assure the town clerk is correct spelling of the names and address for the minutes. Members of the public should restrict their comments to items of town business, or to observe proper decor while addressing the town board. Persons who become unruly or who use inappropriate language or persist in speaking on items not related to town business may be ruled out of order. Although there is no official time constraint, speakers may address one or more items in their comments. They should be considerate of others and try to learn the remarks to no more than five minutes, so that all interested members in the public have the opportunity to be heard. So, open privileges at 7:08. All right, we'll close, but we do that 7:09. Current business, highway, I talked to Nick, actually both Nicks are working tonight, so they're unable to attend. So, for highway, you know, I called back, and Nick has talked to Canadian Sons, you know, as far as the hot patching goes for Prince Town Plaza and for Willow Run neighborhood. I asked them to make sure that they're, at a minimum need to match the county proposal. They haven't responded yet, so, you know, we did take a look up there. Willow Run is actually well patched, it's probably not as pretty as we need it to look, but it's pretty well patched, so I think we should be actually okay for the winter. So, we do have 2015 resurface proposals for Willow Run, Shack Bar, and Prince Town Plaza for next year's budget. It's already in the budget. I'd like to talk to the board about that during the budget procedure or process. It's a pretty big number, but again, we should be able to carry over enough money this year I still need to work with the county, and I think Doug, you went out and looked, and Nick, and the River Drive basins, and call for a clean out. I'll look to see how much money that's actually going to cause, or cost us to clean it all out altogether. The price took one there with one of those vax, it was pretty expensive, but... And, I think that's all that Nick has. Any questions for Nick? Nick, or, sorry, Doug? Joe? Lou?
Pretty busy month, in a bad way. We rebuilt inlet piping on the River Drive Custer Mall, replaced there, and then added in an extra valve, so we could isolate it, which we couldn't do before. You know, so we turned off, so the main line is still flowing back past. Didn't have to go shut off one of the houses. We've got two leaks, one on Route 7, where holes through the pipe, saddle team let go over here, and a little under the roof. Outside of that, everything else pretty much normal. Usually repaired, usual maintenance, rebuilds.
Everything's flowing, is that engineer?
Tonight, don't have it running yet.
That's in faith. I don't have anything. Doug?
No, I'm all clear.
Joe?
Thank you, George.
You're all set, George, thank you.
Thank you. Town planner, as we know, we're just currently looking for a town planner, so I think we've got some applications in, we need to process. I think for the time being, I'm going to ask the board if it's okay if Pat Bishop steps in, and assumes position for a while while we look for a town planner.
Makes sense to me.
You all right with that, Doug?
Not really.
You got somebody else you want to do?
Well, we're just going to put it in the paper for applications, right? Like, you did the building inspector, and...
Right. So, we've also put it on the University of Albany's website, because that's, you know, one of our specialty down there, so...
Yep.
But again, if you're not comfortable, we can just let these applications sit. So, okay, or?
Well, how many applications you got?
Um, I don't know. I haven't gotten any, but Pat's been running with it. We had one, we did one interview, where he took a job in Colorado, so, it's temporary position, or, you know, part-time position, so it was... And then we had it, somebody reached out and was connected, and was looking for some extra hours, but she decided not to take it. Lou, any questions about it, or concerns? Bob?
I'd like to see us get applications and board interview for it.
Sure. You want to run with this, or?
We can run with it. I'd like to see us get applications for it, and sit down and interview. I just don't know how good of a thing it is having the town planner and the planning board chairperson being the same. I don't know if there could be conflict of interest there, but I'd like to see us take interviews, applications.
So, do you want to ask Pat to step in and sit in for this?
And how long is this going to be for? I mean, have we been actively beginning applications right away, or?
Well, I'm hoping so. And again, we put it on the website in Albany, that's where we got Heather, and that's where we got Laura.
I'm uncomfortable with it, but...
Well, we can leave the position open.
I would like the interview for the position, or, you know, accept applications for it.
Mm-hmm. But my question is, in the meantime, when we got applicants coming in, what do you want to do with it? Well, we got two applications in right now, for, I'm not sure what the things are.
Is that something the planning board can look at without a planner approving the board? I mean, can they just come to the, can they just come to the planning board?
Guys, we have one meeting.
Well, I mean, if it's just one or two to, you know, till we get somebody, but...
Well, we probably have to supplement our pay. So, if you're saying yes, then that's what we're saying. If we're saying no, then we have to leave the position open. It may probably be the same hourly, even on a planner salary, we could break it out and, you know, do the simple division, and kind of figure out the hourly rate for by month, and ask Pat to sit in on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
So, this appears, comes across to me then as it kind of being projected out there for a while, and that's what I don't want to see. I mean, I would like to see us maybe even have applications for our next meeting or two, and get somebody, you know, started with it right away.
So, I'm not sure, was that a guess for Pat to step in, or not?
As of right now, no.
Doug?
No.
Okay.
That's my feeling, I want to vote.
Doug?
I agree with Bob.
Okay. Joe?
No, I think Pat's the best choice.
Lou?
No.
Sandy, I guess as far as any new projects coming in, I'm not quite sure to do.
It's going to go to the planning board anyway, with anything that comes in.
Well, not really. The job of the planners, I'm sure, you know, since Gino and everybody's been here, is to prepare the applicant to approach the planning board, or the zoning board, or whatever the situation is going to be. That's their job. So, it saves the applicant time and money, so, that's the job of the planner. But since the position's open now, any applications coming in, we'll just sit. But, to your position, Bob, then, you know, there's, I work with Pat, well, I guess I often drafted up the Juan Ed, and I confirmed with Pat that she's got it on the University of Albany's website, and we'll go from there. How many applications do we have in now, Pat? Or, I'm sorry, Sandy?
Don't know.
All right. Oh, I think one is the sausage place, or...
Oh, I thought you meant for the physician.
No.
Yes, there's two on the desk right now.
Okay. I thought I heard another application or two coming in. Code enforcement, Nick is working nights. Permit's issued, one solar, one porch, one new home on Pangburn Road. Ralph Santora wants to renew his special use permit, let's say he's going to follow up with Pat. He's working on the other special use permits that need to be updated. All right, anything for Nick that you want me to take back to him? Justice. I notice from New York State Unified Court System. And we get this every year, but basically what it's saying is, the Unified Court System's Action Plan for Justice Courts in 2006 includes initiatives to improve accountability controls over justice court finances and records. Again, every year, accordingly, I am requesting that you, which would be me, provide a copy of your most recent audit, calendar year 2013, or fiscal year, and 2014, or examination of your local court's records, and a copy of your board resolution acknowledging the required examination or the audit was conducted. So, I guess I'm asking the board, what is you want me, how do you want me to respond to this? Because as you know, when we tried to close the books on the court's checkbook last year, it didn't bounce out, it was funds short. So, I guess I'm asking the town board, how do you want me to respond?
Wasn't all it done?
We do the audit every year.
Yeah.
We never signed off on it. Because the books didn't balance.
How far off was the book?
Enough that we've had to pay a voucher to balance it.
What's the mark?
I don't know. I think the initial price was seventy bucks, it was out. I wasn't going to put my name on it. Those books, like, our books, you balance zero. Like, your own checkbook, you balance zero. What do you think, Bob?
And what's it going to cost us for the audit?
This isn't a request for audit. This is the court asking us to submit our audit and its findings.
Okay, but if we didn't have an audit, didn't that mean we're going to have to have an audit, right?
Well, an audit, like, when we do our, when we used to, or still do, let's say if you wanted to get an audit, like we wanted to do for the general fund, and we do for the water fund, it's probably five thousand dollars. But this isn't that request. This is a request, just saying, they're requesting me to provide a copy and a report on our court's audits. So, I'm asking the board, how do you want me to respond?
And if we don't have a report, then we have nothing to send in.
Well, if that's what you want me to say, that's, let it all write to them. I would like to say, the board did not close the audit, we could not balance the books.
No, I'm not trying to be hard, Mike, I'm just asking, if we don't have an audit that has been closed, then, I mean, what do we have to send in? You know, that's what I was asking.
Yeah.
So, I mean, to go and spend five thousand dollars over seventy dollars?
Well, I think that's my response is, my response is, we performed an audit, we didn't close it, because the books didn't balance. That's the status quo.
So, send in the papers that you got now, what you got. Why can't you send in what you have?
I can send in a resolution, if there is no resolution, yes, I can do that. I'm just asking for guidance from the board.
I wasn't here, so...
Well, so technically, right, but technically, it's not like there's an action from last year, that's the new job for every board when they come in. So, even though we didn't kind of push on it, Doug, it was the first day or two, technically, when you come into the board, it's an audit, it has nothing to do with last year, it's an activity that happens this year. So, technically, you should have sat in and participated, and we've audited all the books that we do every single year. Again, we go through code enforcement, anybody who's got a checkbook, in a town, we've audited those books, and make sure they balance zero. So, if that's what you want me to do, then that's what I'll do. I wanted to bring it to your attention, I wanted to say I'll send the resolutions, because there's two of them in there, in January, and then March, stating that we still haven't balanced the budget, and, or balanced the books, and it's actually still open, and the checking account is still open.
If you put, if you paid that seventy dollars, or whatever that number was, that's basically saying you balanced the books.
Hmm, no. What that meant was, the book, the account was overdrawn. When one department, in this case, when the election changed hands, and the office changed hands, they zero balance the account, because the judicial court wants a new judge in there, a new bank account, a new checking account. So, the old judge zeros and lets the check for what they think is in the account, let's say seven thousand dollars. They write a check to seven thousand dollars to the new judge, he takes it, opens up a new checking account, the old checking account is zeroed out and is closed. In this case, the check was written to the new judge, he cashed it, opened up his next account, we got word following week that the check, or the old checking account was overdrawn for the shortage of funds. So, we processed the voucher, to put money back into it, to zero balance it. So, the checking account's still open, the problem is, technically, the account's still So, this is one question to you guys. I mean, if you're fine with it, I'll draft a letter, I'll circulate it, you guys can review it, but, you know, there's two resolutions out there stating that we didn't close the books on that checking account, and we did not certify that audit.
What's the repercussion to us as a board sending it in, not closed?
I don't think there's any repercussion, actually, I don't know. You know, the town owns the account, so, you know, we made MDT hole, right? We didn't take anything from them to the hole, but our books aren't balanced.
So, when she wrote that check, she might not know what was in there.
So, how does the board want me to proceed?
Interfuses.
All right, I will draft a letter, run it by Mike for approval, and I'll circulate for the board for your FYI. The next item I wanted to touch on, I need to have one extra, I need to ask Rebecca Sheehan to work some extra hours for the next couple of weeks. So, I just wanted you guys to know that she's going to be working some extra hours to take care of some additional work.
What's the additional work?
The Office of Court Administration is actually coming in to do an audit on last year's books. So, if any more than that, then I'm going to just let go, and... That's what they're coming in? There's a lot to come.
So, she has to be here?
Well, she's got, you know, the keys to the records, and where everything, the filing system, and everything is, yeah, somebody's got to be here.
So, when are they coming in?
I gotta double check on that. I'm assuming, very soon. Next week, sorry.
Next week?
Yep.
If you find that seventy books.
That's your resume. Speaking of audits, we got word today, I talked to Michael Chairs, I'm not sure if you guys remember Michael Chairs. Bobby, remember?
Yes.
Well, I will be meeting him tomorrow, he's going to be auditing the general fund. We have all kinds of audits going on. So, our general fund will be audited, and we'll just see where everything falls out. Questions?
No, I have no questions.
All right.
You're welcome, you want me to come in and check the books?
Exactly. This is my position since January 1st.
I'm elected.
I'm elected too. Looking forward to working with you then. Any questions on that? Doug?
Was this a, this audit, that Chairs is coming in, or did we request that, or is that just tomorrow audit?
No, I sent a letter requesting it.
I think, remember, we got the articles in the paper, that we looked, and got some quotes on bringing in an outside audit firm, and the prices were, you know, five thousand dollars plus to do the audit. And in parallel, I wrote a letter to, to Controller's Office requesting an audit, and it looks like we're successful, so, looking forward to it. Any questions on that, or Doug?
No.
So, the last thing, as far as justice goes, I think the way we wanted to discuss this is, currently, our expense policies, we would write, and these are for... our expense policies would allow anybody to or in the past, we'd write either the checks to the to the employee or, in one particular instance, we would pay the person's phone bill. And as you know, we had issues with that. So what I'm requesting from the board is we draft a new expense policy. As you can see, the former employee withdrew funds from our checking account. And the reason it happened was because we wrote the check to the company that she owed money to. So what I'm requesting the board is we update the employee policy and expense policy, voucher policy to say we will no longer write checks to to the companies or to their cell phones or to whoever owes, to your credit card or whatever is the, the checkbook, the expense check or the voucher check would always go directly to the individual. Don't want to get involved in paying people's bills because that's how withdrawals happen, the unauthorized withdrawals. So as you can see, there's the three different withdrawals. Sandy, can you?
You know, Mike, I'm gonna have to, uh, say something over here.
Okay.
This is, uh, if we're getting into this, this should be an executive session. This is not to be discussed over over there because you're, you're making accusations over here and you're doing this and I don't, I don't like it. We always discuss this in the executive session.
This is, uh, financial with the town.
There's accusations being made.
What's accusations? What, what is that?
There's accusations being made. It should be done in an executive session, not in public media.
It's just public information. So.
A personal issue should be done in the executive session.
It's not a personal issue. I didn't mention any names. I said we need to change the expense policy. And this is on accusations. That's a fact.
This accusation set, or setting you up to a liability, big time, right? You're accusing me of something that
I didn't accuse anybody.
My name is right on here. You are accusing me.
I'm asking if the board can change its
No, then you should know past this out.
And first of all, this isn't back and forth.
Well, you back and forth with everybody else, Mike.
No, okay.
You do. And I have to agree that it is have to do with personality. If you're not going into executive session as your congressman, they can make a motion to do it.
Sure, that's fine. I'm just saying, change the expense policy. That's all I'm asking. All right. Anything for, anything else on justice? All right. Dog Control Officer, Dara sent it in. Um, no. Uh, no report from her. Town Council. Doug, any other things?
No.
Joe? Lou?
Yeah, State Police, uh, we had a problem over there with, there was some mold and the, uh, State Police were not happy with it. Called in the company to eradicate the mold and they, they came right over and took care of the problem. They replaced some sheet rock in the garage. And they cleaned the, uh, the ducts. And it was done. And they called on Wednesday and they came on Friday. They came up with them Thursday, Friday. They came up and took care of the problem. So, uh, they're very happy that that's taken care of right away. They replaced the upper portion of the roof, the flat portion, last Friday. That's, the job has been completed. The, uh, window in the rear will be installed, uh, the end of the month. The window is broke. I got estimates, uh, for, uh, next year to replace all the windows. Got one estimate and two others will be coming in. And
On this year?
Pardon?
On this year's budget?
Not next year.
Okay, good. Perfect. Thank you.
Uh, the, the estimate that I got already, which would go until next year, and we're gonna be getting two more that are coming in to take a look at it. We're gonna be taking care of the garage. That's next up on the agenda. I know that it's kind of warm in here, but, uh, we had a little bit of an Indian summer. I shut the air conditioning off last week because it was cold and the two, two systems are, they collide with each other. The air conditioning comes on when the heat is on, so I just, uh, shut the air conditioning on for the, for the, uh, winter and, uh, put it on heat mode. So it's a little bit warm in here. I apologize for that, but, uh, you know, you can't have, try and save some money on the electrics, so, uh, there's no sense in trying to do, do both for one, one or two days. That's a little warm in here. Other than that, I've got an estimate over here for Dad to do. It's snowplowing again this year, so. That's all I have.
You do. Thank you. Doug, anything for Lou?
No.
Joe?
No.
Bob? Bob, anything?
Uh, just got the question sheets I was going to ask of the board to look at for our next meeting or one of our future meetings on the planning handbook. Loretta still has questions. She wants us as a board to, uh, give her direction on. So if we could take a look at that, possibly in one of our future meetings and come back with some responses and answers.
Anything on the action registers for anybody?
No.
For myself. Time Warner Cable. Did you sell anything for it? So twenty fifteen, I think, was the exit, or the, uh, the Prince Town contract that we're now?
Yeah, Time Warner's in midst of being taken over by Comcast, so currently, Time Warner is not negotiating with any municipalities. Basically, ten people who wait until Comcast starts sending them to deal with that.
So what does that mean to?
Means terms of existing have continued in place until a new agreement is negotiated.
So, you know, for myself, my one bill went up by, I don't know, like fifteen bucks or something. So wouldn't the pricing hold then?
No. The agreements, the municipal agreements don't deal with pricing because municipalities don't have the ability to regulate pricing. Uh, there's a very narrow number of issues that municipalities deal with on the cable franchise agreements. That's basically the issues of public access, the, uh, extension of service, the municipality, uh, and how you handle your franchise fee. The only area that you get into as far as service is that you can have a provision about complaints about service. Say that Town Board can receive complaints from residents that have the service and they basically act as a liaison or, uh, with Time Warner and send those complaints regarding service to them. Uh, but most everything else dealing with cable contracts are under the jurisdiction of the Federal Communications Commission. And on the side, all the franchise agreements, uh, are handled by the Public Service Commission. So the town is a very limited law in, uh, dealing with where the cable provider is.
So final question. So I know, you know, obviously Glendale respa-, or you guys finished up the contract with them. When they change companies, you know, Comcast purchases Time Warner, I'm assuming the contracts don't go with it, so.
Right.
Yeah, my point would be like, the county can't go, go to all five towns and say, hey, we want to negotiate together.
They can, but they tried that several years ago and it didn't work. The municipalities that decided that they were going to try and work together as a consortium to negotiate fell apart. And, uh, the City of Schenectady, you know, cut their own deal, uh, with respect to public access. That's what caused the rift in how they dealt with public access because the City of Schenectady went to Open Stage Media and, uh, kind of cut out, uh, the existing, you know, people that were only having access to media. And, uh, basically forced the other municipalities to go, to use Open Stage Media as well. But that's, that is an area that you could negotiate in your contract. It's, uh, for a small municipality, a difficult thing for you. You don't want to go along with everybody else in the way that they're handling the, uh, you know, public access, you know, like the broadcast at the Town Board meetings and things like that.
All right. So what are your points? Wait for them to call us.
Well, we've, uh, at least on the Glendale side, you know, actually Glendale didn't resolve this contract for that reason because we, we got involved litigation in time there over the excess charges for residents. And when we wound up contesting that and, uh, joining with Attorney General to bring an action against them, that once we recovered all the monies who were residents, about one point two million dollars, Time Warner was not too anxious to sit down. Eventually got back to the table and time for them to say that there was a pending deal with Comcast. That's actually an open contract, so they're still operating on the terms of the prior assistance contract.
Okay. Okay, so wait to see. Um, I don't know if I gave, actually, I don't have any copies yet, but but there's a contract with Potter Kills. So at the end of the year. Did I give you guys copies?
Yeah.
Okay. So last year's budget, now, now to the back of the book, but I don't remember if it's two years ago, but I'm laying it in three years, saying sixty-two thousand annually. Obviously, the last year was seventy-one, this year is gonna be seventy-four or five or so. Is there a question? And, and, you know, again, I'm not, you know, trying to nitpick it or, um, short change or fire department for sure, but just a question on it. Final few lines. Need me to set the call or, or me and John Beisen?
Look, here, this agreement, the, the energy negotiation that was supposed to take place in August, they would have had the aviation, you know, before, uh, you, before August twentieth, about what, uh, what they wanted in excess of sixty-two thousand dollars.
Well, I'll just, being friends around the table, let's say today is August twentieth. All right, but just for the board, um, and maybe I'll ask Sandy, can we pull and see what the other dates are on the other, the other companies? Got any questions on this? Any plus or discussion points?
No.
Amy Gifford is coming up for, uh, appointment on the board assessment. For the bar, sorry. And one of the actions tonight will be also to, there'll be two actions, um, stipulation settlement. You guys got a copy of that? So I'll ask Mike to walk us through that, um, so the stipulation and then the the, uh, resolution. I think that's all I have for tonight, Matt. I'd like to use the next two meetings to work on the budgets. I'm not sure, you know, how much we need to discuss. Do you, what, do you want me to ask the department heads to show up or are we pretty comfortable where we are or we wanted to?
Well, we got the numbers from last year.
Yep.
There was one question. I had, uh,
Do you want questions about the budget tonight?
No, no, not really.
Oh, you don't want to talk about it, Mike?
No, I just, but if you have a question, I mean, I can answer it.
No, that's okay.
All right. I mean, if there's no major changes right now, you know, we're, it's on the agenda to, you know, pass the tentative and make it preliminary. It doesn't, it's a milestone really. We can still make changes, obviously just preliminary, but it's not final. But I really don't expect to see, you know, some major changes here unless some, you know, drastically happens or.
Well, the one that I was worried about was the town clerk. It was thirteen hundred dollars for the, deputy town clerk.
Mm-hmm.
Now all of a sudden it's back up to, what was it, thirty-eight? I forgot.
All right. Well, we can ask Sandy when, you know, when we go to budget meeting to explain this.
Yeah, the town clerk, the deputy.
Mm-hmm.
The deputy here was, uh, two thousand thirteen. I'll make sure I'm reading the right line there. Was, in two thousand thirteen, it was eighty-four sixty-two seventy. And then last year, you put in the budget thirteen hundred. And this year, we're already up to thirty-one sixty-five twenty-eight. And this year we're already up to thirty-one sixty-five twenty-eight, and you're putting in for thirty-three twenty-eight. Why did you cut it down last year to thirteen?
I'll go back and look at our notes, Doug, but...
That was just one thing I seen there.
Okay. Okay. All right. I think that was it for me. Well, any questions for me, guys? I guess I didn't answer that. What about this here with, yeah, it's in the resolution. Oh, okay. So we get to the resolution, I have Mike to walk through it, I'll break. Okay. And then we'll read the resolution and go from there. All right, we're done with that. Let's start with the minutes approval. Motion is hereby resolved. The town, the minutes of the July eighth town board meeting and July 29th town board, special town board meeting, the August 12th town board meeting and the August 19th town board meeting are amended to reflect a correction to the number of the resolutions where the first resolution at July 8th, 2014 will be renumbered from fourteen dash one seven six to fourteen dash one seventy-seven and each subsequent resolution for each of the meetings will also be renumbered accordingly and the minutes as amended are approved. Do you have a motion?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Lou?
Yes.
Mr. Doug?
Yes.
Mr. Joe?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
And myself as the yes. Minutes approval. Whereas resolution fourteen dash two oh one, authorizing payments, authorizing payments from the general fund adopted September 9th, 2014 town board meeting in the amount of forty-one thousand, forty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents was incorrect due to voucher number two forty-eight being a duplicate resulting in the corrected total of twenty thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars and fourteen cents. It is hereby resolved. Resolution fourteen two oh one of September 9th, 2014 town board meeting is hereby amended to void voucher number two forty-eight and to correct the amount, the total amount from forty-one thousand seventy-four dollars sixty-five cents to twenty thousand nine seventy-two fourteen. And with that amended, the minutes of the September 9th, 2014 town board meeting, 2014 are approved. Do you have a motion?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Lou?
Yes.
Mr. Doug?
Yes.
Mr. Joe?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
And the yes. New business?
Before we go on to that, Mike, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Before we go to new business, I'm just looking for September's operating statement, okay, ending in the end of September. Just a quick question and thing that I picked up on. Why was there so, such high figures in our Justice supply line? This seems awful high for, it's one eleven four four dash one.
Pretty, sixteen hundred?
No, it wasn't. Okay, yeah, so that was for what?
I would try to, probably look, well, actually I don't have the last week's or last month's voucher in front of me. You got the book right there. This was run before these, these haven't been run yet.
Oh, okay. But would we have those kind of numbers, eleven and nine thousand dollars in a supply line? Follow them across there?
Correct.
We would? Forget it.
I'm not sure what your question is about. So Justice Supplies had a budget of nine thousand dollars, yeah, or they'll call ten thousand.
Okay. And the amount was eleven five seventy-eight?
Yep. So you're off the budget.
All right, now just form your mind with some ideas.
All right, new business. I guess depending on time, you know, we still have that remaining chapter to be finished. So I just left it on there. I'm not sure if I have to read the whole thing, but I mean, I will. But anyway, I left it on there. At the end of the meeting, if we get nothing, then we still got time. We don't want Ben to go on overtime. Overtime Ben, sorry. Broker of record agreement approval. Again, health benefits with David Lavoy. Do you have a motion is hereby resolved whereas David E. Lavoy of Lavoy Company, 443rd Avenue, Water Leaf, New York, has served as broker and agency of record for the town's health insurance in a good and satisfactory manner and whereas the broker and agency of record agreement has to be authorized on an annual basis, now for, now therefore be resolved, supervisor is hereby authorized to sign a broker and agency of record letter with David E. Lavoy of Lavoy Company for the town's health insurance.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Lou?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
And the yes. New business?
Before we go on to that, Mike, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Before we go to new business, I'm just looking for September's operating statement, okay, ending in the end of September. Just a quick question and thing that I picked up on. Why was there so, such high figures in our Justice supply line? This seems awful high for, it's one eleven four four dash one.
Pretty, sixteen hundred?
No, it wasn't. Okay, yeah, so that was for what?
I would try to, probably look, well, actually I don't have the last week's or last month's voucher in front of me. You got the book right there. This was run before these, these haven't been run yet.
Oh, okay. But would we have those kind of numbers, eleven and nine thousand dollars in a supply line? Follow them across there?
Correct.
We would? Forget it.
I'm not sure what your question is about. So Justice Supplies had a budget of nine thousand dollars, yeah, or they'll call ten thousand.
Okay. And the amount was eleven five seventy-eight?
Yep. So you're off the budget.
All right, now just form your mind with some ideas.
All right, new business. I guess depending on time, you know, we still have that remaining chapter to be finished. So I just left it on there. I'm not sure if I have to read the whole thing, but I mean, I will. But anyway, I left it on there. At the end of the meeting, if we get nothing, then we still got time. We don't want Ben to go on overtime. Overtime Ben, sorry. Broker of record agreement approval. Again, health benefits with David Lavoy. Do you have a motion is hereby resolved whereas David E. Lavoy of Lavoy Company, 443rd Avenue, Water Leaf, New York, has served as broker and agency of record for the town's health insurance in a good and satisfactory manner and whereas the broker and agency of record agreement has to be authorized on an annual basis, now for, now therefore be resolved, supervisor is hereby authorized to sign a broker and agency of record letter with David E. Lavoy of Lavoy Company for the town's health insurance.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Lou?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
State police, state police barracks mold remediation. So as Lou indicated earlier, we considered emergency and didn't necessarily follow through on the normal procurement policy process. So do I have a motion? Whereas upon discovery of possible mold in the garage area, the state police barracks and the possibility of health risks associated with mold, town board was compelled to treat the matter as an emergency and necessarily take immediate remediation. It is hereby resolved, the town board, who is the expenditure of funds outside required process as documented in the town of Princeton procurement policy, to engage...
Can we say something about the other name?
Yes.
Not for the other name?
Not after the name of the company, huh? Apparently something built yet anyway, so we won't be able to type this one.
Well, yes. Can you say more than that?
They said they were unsigned right out, so I assumed that they did. Do you have a table?
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Pardon?
Do you know how much it was?
Uh, he said in the neighborhood of fourteen hundred. Could be less, could be a little more.
Yeah, we can take that.
All right. All right. Sorry, I could, I wrote this, I should have called you. Camillo bit permit stipulation, so this is one we need to talk to the board about. So as you know, I thought it was just knee sweat. So the issue was the permittees purchased property down on Williamsburg Road across from the wellhouse in W.1. Wellhead Protection Overlay District, and as you know, that is under the moratorium. So a permit was issued in error and the applicants went ahead and started construction, which was again in violation of the moratorium. But we don't want to jeopardize either the town because the error was made, but we don't want to jeopardize the applicants either. It's basically a garage for cars and not a garage to, like, commercial garage, more of a hobby garage where they build their cars, whatever they're doing. So we put into place this stipulation settlement, which acknowledges that the error made that the permittees will follow the local building codes and permits, understanding they are in the W.1 Wellhead Protection Overlay District and hopefully both teams are, have avoided litigation and did not jeopardize the town. So I know the applicants have been very patient with this. You know, I'm going to turn it over to Mike here to kind of walk through it a little bit more detail than I obviously have communicated to the board and to the residents here, but you know, it's a pretty serious issue. I met with the planning board chair, the residents, the code enforcement officer, you know, we brought in Jeff Baker, and we've all, you know, come to this agreement, I think we're all in agreement, but so I'm not sure Mike, do you have any more to expand on or not or not?
Well, given that this was the W.1 Wellhead Protection District, it required a special use permit for somebody to construct this and it was a bit after they were gone before the planning board. That didn't happen before the permit was issued and then construction was started. So the problem for the town is that when somebody's issued a building permit, they have the right to rely upon that, that, you know, recharge the, you know, building inspector code enforcement officer with that authority and so, you know, a member of the public has no reason to doubt, you know, the validity of the permit that they get. So they, you know, could act pursuant to that permit even if it were issued contrary to our town code. So once they did, you know, yeah, you could issue a stop work order, but the legal theory is that someone who, once they have a building permit, that they have what they call proprietary interest, you know, they now have, you know, sort of a monetary issue. And so it probably would, if there weren't the agreement, result in litigation and chances are that, you know, court would have permitted them to continue the, complete the construction given these facts and circumstances. So, you know, the compromise here is that we basically agreed to abide by all of the conditions that would protect the wellhead district so that, well, they would only be using that structure for storing vehicles, not for, you know, repair garage and so that they're not going to have materials, you know, like oil, gasoline, lubricants, antifreeze, paint, solvents, any of the kinds of things that would otherwise be prohibited in that district and which could affect, you know, the watershed. And that they will have the concrete floor so that, you know, the potential for any kind of leakage from any stored vehicles getting into groundwater would be limited. So given the circumstances, it's probably, you know, the best that we could expect at this point.
And again, you know, the residents or permittees were, you know, understood and pretty, you know, agreeable and amenable to it, so hoping the board will pass it.
The moratorium, that went all the way down to the tunnel bridge? I have an impression it only went to the...
Yeah, I know, that, the real issue is a special use permit and they, so they didn't get, correct. And so they, that never was presented to the planning board because they would then have the right to put conditions on this and chances are that they might have just come up with the same conditions listed here.
So it's not the most moratorium?
As, as the special use, because the moratorium did deal with special use permits.
Thank you, Mike. Doug, questions?
Is it true that there was a permit issued a couple of years ago to build this and now they just renewed it?
I don't have the information. This permit was issued on June 3rd, 2014.
Great, but I'm talking a couple of years ago. Was there a permit issued?
Yeah, the building permits expire, so if it were more than three years ago, it would have expired. And generally even, that's the maximum that you get on a building permit. You generally have a period where you have to at least start construction and that's generally as limited as six months. So chances are if there were one from a couple of years ago, it wouldn't be any good anyway.
General question, and I think maybe this is where Doug's going. If a permit was issued, let's say, you know, I want to use better than any special use permit on a piece of property and then I turned around and sold the property, does the permit travel with the property or with the owner?
Generally, generally the use of the property, which is being governed by the special use permit. Because when you have a special use permit, the, the concept is that the underlying use is a permitted use, but there need to be conditions to regulate that use. And so that normally the special use permit would travel with the property as long as, you know, you're within all the timelines, you know, if there were time limits for doing construction, time limits for construction to be completed, you would normally be able to continue that.
Anything additional, Doug? Joe?
Yes.
Mr. Lou?
Yes.
Bob?
No, we're good.
All right. Do I need to read the full stipulation or this resolution? upon review and approval of attorneys, uh, Quakers and Baker, to sign the stipulation of settlement with Mr. D'Amelio and Cachetti. Do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Doug?
Yes.
Mr. Joe?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
All right, general funds claims. Do I have a motion, the town board? And again, just for the audience and the residents, the vouchers, but not the vouchers, the abstracts are attached to the meeting minutes or meeting agenda, assume to be meeting minutes for reference. Do I have a motion, it's hereby resolved, the town board approves claims two fifty-seven to claim two seventy-nine, two seven-nine in the amount of twenty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. Do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Doug?
Yes.
Mr. Joe?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
General funds transfers. Do I have a motion, that town board file, approves the following transfers. Uh, sixteen hundred and thirty dollars from the assistant court clerk to supply line one-one-one oh four dot one. Uh, reason code under budgeted. Four hundred dollars for the bookkeeper, supply line thirteen four oh one, um, to thirteen four oh four supplies, E code stipend. Seventeen dollars on a town clerk equipment, fourteen one oh two to town clerk supplies, fourteen one oh four for postage. Uh, two oh four from Central Print Supplies, sixteen seven oh four to, uh, Central Print Professional Service, sixteen seven oh one, reasons under budgeted. Seventeen dollars for sixteen seven oh four Central Supplies Supplies. To sixteen seven fourteen Central Print Supply Line, under budgeted. Eight oh eight from State Police Contract, three one two oh four to State Police Repair, three one two five four, reasons under budgeted. And a hundred and seventy dollars from Z R C Professional Service, eight zero three five one to Board of Appeal Secretary, um, eight zero one one one, reasons under budgeted. Do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Second? Second. Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Doug?
Yes.
Mr. Joe?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Abolled.
And he's a yes. Board fund claims. Uh, do I have a motion, the town board approves claims ninety-seven through one eleven, the amount of thirteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twelve cents. Do I have a motion?
So...
Second?
I'll second.
Who? Who's got it? Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Doug?
Yes.
Mr. Joe?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
Joyce is a yes. Highway claims. Do I have a motion, town board claims number five, the amount of five hundred and sixty-two dollars and twelve cents for county maintenance road repairs. Do I have any motion?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Luke? Yes. Mr. Doug?
Yes.
Mr. Joe?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
And he's a yes. Highway transfer. Uh, do I have a motion, hereby the town board approves the transfer of the five hundred and sixty-two dollars and twelve cents from account nine nine zero one nine to account five zero three one to county road, county maintenance road repairs. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Doug?
Doug.
Mr. Joe?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
And he's a yes. So... We need to move the November meeting. Right now, we've moved it to the eighteenth. We have an option to move it maybe to the tenth or the eighteenth. I've put in here the eighteenth. Because the budget's gotta be submitted by the twentieth.
I prefer it could be before that, because I'm gonna be out of town. My daughter's expecting. We'll leave it on the fifteenth.
Are you guys okay with the tenth?
I'm fine.
Doug?
Yep.
Bob?
Yeah, that's fine.
And Joe, I'm assuming that's fine?
Yep.
Mike?
Was that Monday?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, motion to reschedule the November town board meeting. Where the town board meeting is generally scheduled for the second Tuesday of the month. But the second Tuesday of November is Veterans Day, a state and national holiday. Before I work, it's hereby resolved, the November town board meeting is hereby rescheduled for Monday, November tenth, twenty fourteen.
I should say at seven.
At seven P M. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second? Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Doug?
Yes.
Mr. Joe?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
And he's a yes. So... You know, there's, as we talked earlier, if there's no major concerns, uh, I'm gonna suggest we move the tentative budget to preliminary budget status. Uh, again, there's change, we can make changes if required. Again, it doesn't necessarily have to be submitted till, well, it has to be submitted by the twentieth. I'd like to get it done sooner. Before they go, I'll joke still in town, so they can participate in the process. So, with that, do I have a motion, is your
No, I don't think we should do that. I think that we should have a meeting, just like we usually do, to discuss the budget before we have the public hearing. And this is what this says. We're gonna do it on the same night as the public hearing.
Are we gonna just be working on this next week?
Yeah.
You said.
We're gonna go over preliminary budget next week?
Yeah. Or next three weeks, everyone wanna do it? Well, don't we have to for the public hearing? If we move this to a preliminary budget, aren't we supposed to meet on the tentative budget first? Before we move and agree to move it to a preliminary budget?
That's, if there are legal requirements, do you do that? Different towns, different things, um, just do they have no legal, uh, level, level of rule? You know, they, if you're comfortable with the supervisors', uh, tentative budget, you can move it to preliminary. With the preliminary, you're gonna get still considerate and then take into consideration, right, amendments you get after the public hearing. To amend the preliminary, if you're gonna buy a budget. Not too much legal difference there.
So, if we discuss this next week, we couldn't, uh, deal with it next week as far as moving it forward after we look at it and discuss it next week?
Well, after, well, you wouldn't, you wouldn't amend it then. You'd amend it sort of before the adaption of the final budget. It was like, now we're gonna do that November tenth. So, you can't up until November tenth. You could, if you wanted to, um, the night after the public hearing, you could do your amendments then.
I would like to take a look at it before we get to
No, you can certainly look at it and, and go over as much of it at any meetings up until that point. I'm just saying the next step, you would probably wanna do all of your amendments to the preliminary budget at once.
Right, but what's the purpose of bypassing the tentative later step? What's the purpose of that?
Right now, it's to try and keep everything on the timetable, so you have enough time to notice your public hearing. And give everybody opportunity, the public the opportunity to be heard on that, if we move towards final budgets.
Well, how can you change the numbers after you have a public hearing?
That's everybody.
That's everybody, that's the way it goes over here.
That's why you have the public hearing. If the public comes out and says, you know, they don't like it, an item in your budget, and they're gonna urge you to change it. So, you have to have the opportunity to hear what the public has to say and amend, because it's only a preliminary budget. It's not the final budget. You're not gonna adapt that final budget until November. So, you want to hear from the public on the budget.
So, we can't make any tentative changes between now and then?
Yeah, you, you, what a lot of people do, is you mark them down on the paper. It's what you're gonna propose as the changes to the, uh, preliminary budget. And so that you'll be prepared and even at the discussion, at the public hearing. If, if you were prepared at that time, you say what you're considering changing, you could, you know, let the public know then.
So, then we as a board can't work on it and make changes before we go public?
Yeah, but they're, they're paper changes for now.
Right, well, that's what I think we're looking for, is working on the tentative budget. Make our changes that we see that maybe need to be changed before we... I guess that's the way we seem like we've always done it over the years, where we've gone these steps, tentative, preliminary, and then
Nothing's changed, you know, you can put it off the side. I mean, that's kinda how I asked at open meeting, I was like, so, you guys have looked at the budgets, nothing major changes from last year? Maybe one or two spots here and there. I, but, no, if you guys don't, that's fine.
I'd like to look at it with the board next week.
Sure.
You know, as far as a work session or whatever we're gonna have working on it?
Mm-hmm. Do you want the department heads?
Makes no difference to me.
Well, I mean, they're the ones that submitted their budgets. If you're gonna ask them why they did something, I'd like to give a little bit of notice.
That's fine with me, whatever the rest of the board, I'm okay with it, but...
Uh, I wouldn't, you just keep in mind that you have certain time limitations. So, you have to publish your notice of your hearing on the preliminary budget. So, and then, you're gonna have generally more time between your hearing and when you adapt the final budget. So, if you're pushing this back, but you're gonna have a timetable to be because the notice has to appear at least five days ahead of time, paper, so, say anything, because that is gonna watch. At least five days before that, right, so you generally work on a ten day window. So, if you're not to next week before you notice.
We probably have to meet on the third. And then the tenth.
All right, and that, next week, they may have a special town board meeting, so you can have your resolution called for public hearing.
What do you wanna do, Bob?
It's on a Tuesday at the unelection day.
Right, yeah.
Well, as long as we can be working on it the next couple of weeks, I'm, whatever the rest of the board. I'd just like to see us work with the board on it before we, I mean, if you wanna post it.
I still think we should, uh, go over it before we have the public hearing on it.
All right, that's what I'm saying, that we're gonna work on it the next couple of weeks. But if they post it
The public hearing will be in a couple of weeks?
Couple of weeks, so, but we would still have time to work on it.
Right, you can make changes.
Yeah. That's why I was asking about the tentative, whatever, what their importance of bypassing that was. As long as we've got time to work on it as a board, for it both public.
So, we're gonna meet next week?
Yeah.
We have already scheduled the fourteen, the fourteen twenty-first. I'm hoping to come Saturday. We can, you know, meet as a board on Saturday morning if you want. I, I'm open to, you know me, I'll, I'll work anytime.
I don't use a bad date for me.
Sunday?
I don't think you'd get a department head, sure.
Well, I would still say we could meet the department heads, you know, next Tuesday or, or whatever. Um, but if you guys wanted to meet, you know, to, if Bob, you know, wants to do is go over, you know, as a board. Again, I'm fine, whatever you guys wanna do. So, you set the twenty-first, right? Right, but I mean, if we want to meet before that, all I can do is just probably notice it. So, if you guys don't work Saturday, you wanna work Sunday, or Thursday?
Probably notice that we still have two meetings to work on, right?
We can meet every single day between town and public hearing. Whatever you guys wanna do. But there is a timeline. I mean, the bottom line is that it needs to be a public hearing at the end, and we need to have it done by the twentieth. It's gotta, we gotta push the button, it's gotta go.
So, what day you want it up then, actually?
Well, we're gonna meet Tuesday. We're already meeting Tuesday.
Okay.
So, are we table on this? We're gonna pass this preliminary?
I don't think we should backside to the twenty-first until we go over it.
Okay, so that puts us out another week. So, the public hearing would be? The third?
You know, I went through the budget, it doesn't appear to be anything, I mean... I think this is a reasonable suggestion.
So, we meet next Tuesday? That tour is set?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we need to reset the public hearing for Monday, the third?
Well, we'll have to do that next Tuesday, because we're home. And we don't have the preliminary budget, we're not making a tentative preliminary.
All right, so this is tabled. And that should bring this meeting to an end. Isn't there a public hearing at the end there? So, we did get our, I'm not sure if you guys did see it, but our ratings from Standard Board. Should I give them to you? We've got the official ratings. It's not a big copy, right? But, um... All right, so, we tabled that, we can open up for purposes of the floor, same rules applied.
Michelle Danworth, after you go, just somewhat alarmed at the stance that the supervisor has taken on putting a policy together, when all you had to do was suggest what the policy is, that you wanted to make a change, discuss it with your board, put it down for a vote. You, your handout, Mike, is politically motivated again. You're doing a disservice to the town board and to the town residents, to use this forum to distribute propaganda, as well as use your position to convey an opinion and submit it as a supervisor. The propaganda that you've distributed in the past has listed you as supervisor, when in fact, it should not have. It's, you were conveying a message from the political standpoint, that you as a supervisor approved the message, thus making it a opinion of this town of Princeton, when it should have said you as your politically affiliated position, instead of supervisor. You conveyed a position as a supervisor, which I think was wrong. And as far as this information that you put out there, you can put a spin on it any way you want, and throw your political twist into the equation. You know, and Mr. Quavis knows, that you went to the state police two times on this issue. The town of Princeton suffered no loss, Michelle Danworth suffered no gain. You're trying to use this to disgrace my run for judging. I did not commit a crime, and you know it. The state police said it on more than one occasion, that there was no criminality in this matter, and yet you went there twice. And now you're putting it out there. You're very rude, Mike.
I'm actually looking for some documentation, go ahead.
Really?
I'm listening, yeah.
And the second time, there was, again, no criminality. You and Mr. Quavis sat there with senior investigator, indicating that in no uncertain terms, that they would entertain another complaint on this matter, and the matter was closed. So, why didn't you show the reversals? Why didn't you show where the money was put back in, as a result of a mistake? You failed to leave, to put them on there, you purposely left them out.
Actually, one's on there, but go ahead.
That is not, it wasn't on there, it was a return, it was a disapprove, it wasn't a, it wasn't a redeposit.
So, you look at page two.
Page two says...
What does it say?
Where does it, where does it say? It says, "Not authorized, incomplete," that does not say reversal.
It's actually...
It is a criminal, absolutely.
Absolutely.
But it doesn't, it says not authorized. So, it was, it was failed to be authorized, it wasn't any reversals of any of the accounts that were taken out. But anyways, you can call it what you want.
It's the count... Oh, go ahead, finish your, go ahead.
Yeah. And, again... I think that the town board members and this public have a right to know, the true answers as to why you're using this, and your failure to answer them, just confirms that you lie, and you will use anything but the truth, to get yourself puffed up and make yourself look good and others look bad. And one more thing with regard to the comptroller, I had a conversation with the regional director in Greens Falls, who said they don't normally do audits, unless the file gets so thick with complaints, they initiate the, they initiate the audit on their own. And that can be confirmed by several other members who also made complaints. So, once that complaint file gets large enough, a red flag goes off, they contact the town. So, that's the only reason why the audit's happening.
Great.
So, maybe you shouldn't answer some questions in the...
I don't know. So, this is the bank statement.
Good.
It's not an opinion, it's not written by anybody.
Why did what?
This is the bank statement.
Okay, and where is the information regarding the state police that they sent to you?
They didn't send anything.
And why, oh, well then, why would you only put the bank statement out there?
So, maybe you can explain to us, why would you money from Arch?!
I did not.
It has your name on there.
And why was there no criminality, if you went to the state police asking for that for your investigation?
Did you authorize the transfer of funds?
It was an absolute honest and innocent mistake that was reversed. There was no gain to me, and no loss to the town of Princeton.
It was reversed?
No, so, answer that question, was there a gain to me? Did I gain anything?
I don't know.
Yes, you did, you lied. You lied, Mike, you lied!
Michelle, actually, this should be an executive session, not in public, in public, like Mike just brought it up by mistake.
This is the bank statement.
This is executive session material.
As Lou said.
As Lou said, as Bob said, and again, Mike, it's...
It's your propaganda way to...
So, we can tell me...
Politics. It's politics.
Right.
You can explain it.
I don't have to explain anything, the state police already explained.
You made three transfers out of our...
The state police did a full investigation, Mike. No criminality. No criminality.
Well, we're not going to comment on the relationship between state police and...
This is executive session, Scott. You're out of line, Mike.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, you are.
So...
Discussing personnel in open forum, you're out of line.
I didn't bring it up, all I said was...
You brought it up, you distributed it to everybody, but you held it. You held it long enough, so everyone was seated, and they wouldn't go get it. This is an employee matter, this is executive session.
You don't have an employee.
This is a former employee. This is unethical.
She's not an employee.
She's a former employee.
She's an elected official.
She's a former employee as well. You're wrong, Mike.
But why did you take, why did you take the court clerk and the judge position into executive session, and have to talk about it then, back in 2012? That all... When, when the whole issue of the judge and the court clerk position were brought up, that had to go into executive session.
You were an employee.
I was also the judge.
An elected official.
Why didn't you talk about the judge position in open forum, then? Sorry, Mr. President.
Take your time, don't worry.
No, it's ridiculous, it's propaganda, anyways. We have the proof, the proof. I have the proof. You have no proof.
This is...
Then why wasn't I arrested? Why wasn't I arrested, then, Mike? Why wasn't I arrested if I committed a crime? Tell me that, tell me that you and Mr. Quavis had stormed out of the state police, because you didn't have your way.
Nobody said you committed a crime.
Then why did you go and ask them to do an investigation, if there was no crime?
I was looking for information.
Really, you couldn't come to me and look for information?
Why didn't you come to us, when you were drawing the money?
Because you never paid to me, and said there was a mistake. I didn't realize it was a mistake till after the fact.
Three times?
No, one month. Again, I'm not going to, I'm not going to answer...
Three times, a month later.
Not a month later, a day later, when my phone was turned off.
That's why you transferred it.
Oh, right.
Do you have something to say?
Yeah, Tim Mulley, Vernon Drive. In regards to the request for the audit, from the Judiciary Committee, the appropriate response to that, by the way, is to send the audit that you have. We have an audit, we don't have to spend $5,000 for another one, we have an audit that's seven bucks or so off, that doesn't have to zero out, budgets, audits are submitted all the time, they don't zero out, it's up to them to evaluate that particular thing. So, why don't we just take this?
Submit.
Submit. What are we, what are we hedging around for?
I'm not hedging around, I asked advice of the board.
Well, and I think Mr. Gray suggested that, he more or less suggested that, and that's the appropriate response.
Right, okay.
So, why don't we just do that?
That's where we're going with it.
Good.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll close it at 9:45, or 8:45? Make a motion to close it, all right?
Close it.
We can go to executive session. Do we motion to adjourn? Call a favor?
Aye.